...of the Mount Vernon Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Dental Code, Chapter 5, 5.1. At this time, we need a motion to certify by the agenda. A motion made by Robert. It's seconded by Scott. All four. One, two, three, four, five. Let the record show that Brooke Vassell is not present, and Linda Baird is not present at this time. And I'll say a prayer. Please play with me. God, thank you for bringing us here tonight. And we pray for our students and our staff as we get near the end of school. We pray, Lord, that we get good test results this year, though we had some obstacles that the state sent to us. We pray, Lord, that we were prepared. And be with our staff, all of our bus drivers, folks who'll be doing different things, folks in the custodial work, and our cafeteria workers getting food for these kids. Thank you, Lord, for the many blessings that they give us every day. Give us wisdom as a board, and help us to do the work for your kids. Amen. And let's do our pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. All right, at this time, item number two on your agenda, consider and possible action to approve and adopt an order canvassing the election results, returns for the May 6, 2023 bond election.
Okay, Board President, ask that you, as a board, canvass the votes for approval for, with these numbers as presented. Proposition A, the issuance of $47,400,000 bonds for the construction, renovation, improvement, acquisition, equipment of school buildings, as was on the ballot, with a count of 1,259 votes for and 719 votes against. And Proposition B, as presented, the issuance of $16,200,000 worth of bonds. Sorry. Sorry, I just hit the wrong deal on my computer. For Proposition B, $16.2 million worth of bonds for athletic facilities, with 1,152 votes for and 818 votes against.
Is that the form of the motion?
Can I just have it be in the form of a motion? Yes, sir.
Okay, so at this time, I need a motion that we accept the results for Prop A and Prop B as presented.
I saw make a motion.
Motion made by Robert. Seconded by Josh. All four. One, two, three, four, five, zero. Thank you for Prop A and Prop B. Next.
Next, we have the Minister of Oath of Office done a post-doel like a board trustees. We do have, as a result of the election on Saturday as well, we have a, one new board member, eight-willed backup, Josh Jordan ran and opposed, and was therefore re-elected to his position. Ms. Linda Baird received the most votes for her seat. She is not here tonight, so will receive her oath of office at the next call of board meeting that she is in attendance. And for Brooke Vassell's seat, that she did not run for reelection on, out of three who ran for her seat, Kyle Clayton received the most votes for her. So tonight, we will administer oath of office to Kyle. So Kyle, Jessica, if y'all come up. Oh, I'm sorry. You as well.
Okay. I.
I, Kyle Clayton.
Please always swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
I solemnly swear. I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of the school. For the Mount Vernon Independent School District.
See, for the Mount Vernon Independent School District, and the state of Texas.
And I will, to the best of my abilities.
And I will, to the best of my abilities.
Reserve.
Reserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
All right, let's move on to item four. And Kyle, I'll just kind of walk you through some of this stuff here, round up what we do. Kyle doesn't have a board book yet, he just has an agenda to go through, kind of like some of us do. So we'll, as usual, explain different things as we go through our action items later. Reorganization of the Board of Trustees, we do this in May every year. So at this time, I'll take nominations for President of the Board. I'll nominate Aaron Sanders. Aaron Sanders, any other nominations at this time? Okay, all for Aaron. Six. At this time, we need a nomination for a Vice President.
I nominate Josh Jordan.
Josh Jordan. Any other nominations? All for Josh. Six. And at this time, a Secretary.
I nominate Leanne Ramsey.
Leanne. Any other nominations? All for Leanne. Six. Okay. Then Leanne, at this time, will you swap spots with Kyle? If you can come over here at this time.
I don't know what to do.
Oh, you'll learn.
Here you go.
Okay, moving on this time to special recognition. Dr. McCullough, before all you're doing that, I'm gonna have a little special recognition right quick while you're showing her something. I'm gonna kick this mic here on. So Saturday, we had an election and had a lot going on. Had a little, had a little competition at Austin. And so our superintendent secretary, what's your title, Jessica?
Administrative Assistant.
Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent. Happy to be here because she is also in charge of our elections up here at the school. So while her son was in Austin competing on Saturday, Jessica, that was part of her job, she was here. And she got here about 6:45 and all, I don't know, what'd you get out here before midnight? 11:30, okay. This is a little something from the board. We appreciate you, we know that you do whatever, but you've come in here behind Lori that did this for a long time, and we're throwing a lot of stuff at you. So as a board, we appreciate what you do. Thank you, Jessica. All right, Doc, you got some stuff?
Yes, sir. In our, as we've done in the past, in May, we take the opportunity to recognize several groups of students here at the end of the year. Some because their competitions just ended. We always take the opportunity and love to do so, and recognize our student groups who advance all the way to state. And especially for those who win state, which we have the opportunity to recognize that tonight as well. So what we're gonna do is I'll ask each sponsor to come up and introduce your students, tell us a little bit about your group and their accomplishments, and what they've done, and anything else you'd like for us to know. And if you can, if you can, if you would, your group, as you go back down, kind of hang them real quick, allow each group to be recognized tonight. And before you, before you exit, if you would, just so we do all of that together. So first, if we will have Ms. Carly Hunt come forward and her OAP group.
I don't know if I need this, I'm kind of loud. Y'all can go over there. Good evening. First, I want to say thank you to the, to the community and to the school of Mount Vernon for your support this season. This has been a whirlwind of a season. And though many of us feel like it hasn't ended, we are so thankful for your support and your sponsorships and everything. We had a really good season this year. The show we did was called A Monster Call. Hold up, everybody. Mrs. Jude, he's our honorary One at Play member. So this year, we were able to receive the title of District Champions, and knock and wave as I say your name. Awards for the us as District Champions included All-Star Cast member Ian Davidson. And this year, at District, we took home both Best Performers with Athan Bales and Daliana Latortu. As we moved on to Bi-Districts, we were then titled the Bi-District Champions. At both of these contests, we received the scores of straight ones, which is basically a perfect score. So we received Bi-District Champions as well. Awards there include honorable mention All-Star Cast Daliana Latortu and Connor Coburn. All-Star Cast Hayden Bookie Mitchell and Edith Ian Davidson. And Best Performer Athan Bales. From there, we made the trek to Longview, where we advanced to Region. Awards there at Longview included honorable mention Mr. Ian Davidson, All-Star Cast Daliana Latortu, and Best Performer Mr. Athan Bales. From there, we had a very exciting trip to Tyler Junior College, where we were named the Regional Champions. The awards there included honorable mention All-Star Cast with Daliana Latortu, All-Star Cast Connor Coburn and Ian Davidson, and Best Performer Athan Bales. Then, we were gracious and excited enough to be given the title of Regional Champions, which took us to the state contest. At the state contest, we were one of eight plays to compete. I think, what did y'all say we started off with, Dali, like 250 or? 200, about 200. I think at the beginning of the year, there's around 250, 275 3A schools. So to make it in the top eight in One at Play is a huge honor in and of itself. I don't think any of us expected to lead with this awesome gold medal hanging around our necks, but we did. And so we left with the title of State Champion. Honorable mention All-Star Cast went to Daliana Latortu. All-Star Cast went to Athan Bales. And Best Performer for the state meet went to Ian Davidson. And Ian Davidson also received the prestigious award of the Samuel French Award, which is given to the top performer at the 3A state meet. Basically meaning in keys is the best performer in the 3A state of Texas. We are so thankful and excited for this year. Again, we were kind of in shock, I think. We were just excited to be at state. I love these kids, thank you for your support. We will be having one final, oh, it's right. This makes it the 11th state appearance for Mount Vernon and the fourth state title for Mount Vernon. And I think this is my first time at state, and this is all of their first time at state for state One at Play. We will be having a final performance, final. So tell your friends this is it. Very last one, next Friday, the 19th at 5:30 here, admission is $10. We would love to see you all there as we close the end of the truly amazing year. Again, we cannot thank you enough for your support. It's, it's been truly, being a part of a Mount Vernon School District and teaching here is a blessing because of all of you and because of the community and the board. So thank you so much for just everything. Thank you so much. I know they appreciate it, and I appreciate it as well. So thank you.
Let's do a board picture, if we can. You coordinate it.
Line up the flag awards, please.
Here we can, here we can, the second round.
Also, I had it back up here a minute for the 17 camera.
Y'all look at Lily right there in the middle for the newspaper.
Thanks, while OAP is leaving the stage. If we could have our Floriculture team come forward, please.
One at Play has a radio interview, is that right? Radio, TV?
Yeah, sir, we have, we have another, we have another interview.
Okay.
Sorry.
Make us proud again.
Okay.
Paula, will you mind if I just break all the S and C?
Please, yes, please. That's actually.
Okay, that's fine.
I just wanted, yes, if you'd like for them to, please have them come forward.
Okay, so I apologize, I don't have a prepared script for tonight, but I just want to share a little bit of what these teams here from Mount Vernon FFA have done for us this year. We have two teams represented that went to state. We have our Floriculture Science, represented by Marissa Bankhead and Abigail Bentley. And then we have our State Team for Veterinary Science, for Abby, Avery Burns, and Brandon Westbrook. And so each of these teams are, the first team that we have had represented from the Mount Vernon FFA chapter competing in each of these divisions. Obviously, in the past, we've had some state qualifiers in nursery landscape, in home side land judging, but I think it's a really neat fact that we've been able to shift direction with some of our career-based skills and then still make it to the state level here. So with their particular competition, something that's a little bit different than some of the other UIL-based competitions, is that we don't just focus on 3A. We're actually judged against the entire state of Texas from 1A to 6A when we're ranked. And so when we go to our area competition that they qualified out of, they were compared against districts all the way through with every FFA chapter. And so for the area contest, the Floriculture team, I believe, placed fifth in their area and advanced there. The Vet Science team placed sixth out of their area. And then when they came out of state, they were both improving. I believe the Floriculture team was fourth in their respective area from the state event, and then same with the Vet Science team. So it's good, good stuff coming from our program. Really excited. I know that we got some returning individuals, and we're excited to see what they can return and do next year.
Three of y'all on this side of the Mount Vernon, and two and Dixon on this side. And we're gonna get us a picture right quick. Look at Jessica, this whack.
Congratulations, y'all, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, if we could have our Cosmetology students come up, please.
Hello, everybody. I am Kayla Norwood, the Cosmetology instructor here at Mount Vernon High School. With us tonight, we have a few of our seniors, Kaylee Teenan, Claire Rutledge, Savannah Ross, Savvy, and Gracie Hornum. These are our completers of our program for the 2023 school year. That means that they have gained 1,000 hours over their four-year high school career in the Cosmetology program and with me. So they get to go on and take their written and practical exams to become licensed cosmetologists for the state of Texas. This means that they get to, once they do that, go on and run a business, have a business, create clientele, anything in the cosmetology industry, which is very broad these days. And I don't harp on these girls near enough. I don't know if any of you guys know. And they literally put in 1,000 hours of time. They clock in, they clock out, they come in the mornings early before school, they stay late. In fact, we were kind of late coming in the door because we have class at the salon this evening. So they really do put in a lot of work and extra time out of the school day to make this happen. And that being said, we are so thankful for their parents for supporting them and their program. It takes a lot to get them here early in the morning before they can drive and to pick them up late in the evenings. Also, the teachers that allow them to come in for extra time. If they're not doing anything in their class or they finish up their work, they will let them come to me. So there's a lot of people that are involved in these girls' success, but mostly them, of course, themselves. And it's kind of emotional. This is my first year of freshmen, so we kind of grow together as them being kids and myself being an instructor. So this is kind of a big moment. They also persevered through COVID. They lost over 200 possible hours of class time in COVID, and yet they're still finishing their 1,000-hour program. That is something to definitely be proud of and amazed with. They also were faced with a little bit of a setback at the beginning of this year, and that cost them, I think it was right up 28, 29 hours also, that they had to make up. That being said, here they are, they're completers, and we're very, very proud of them. So give them a hand. And we'd also like to thank all of you who come in, some of our board members, some of our parents, and others that come in to support the program and let us work on you, or sending your children over and let us work on them. There's nothing like hands-on human experience. We love our mannequins, but they're just not the same. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations, ladies. Good job. And we have one more student group that we're gonna recognize tonight. If we could have our band students come forward, please.
Hello. Hi, my name is Sarah Gonzalez, I'm one of the assistant directors here for the Mount Vernon Band Program. In front of you, we have seven. Seven, am I counting correctly? We have 10 students in total, but a few of them couldn't make it due to work or things like that. But we have 10 soloists or trios or ensembles that are gonna be attending at State Solen Ensemble here in Austin on May 28th to the 29th is when we're gonna be attending. How this process goes is that for our high school band student, there are these three events that these students are able to make state or qualify for. The first is the marching band program that we have in the fall. That usually happens in November. The second time will be the All-Region Process, which happens in February. And the third time, that happens for the State Solen Ensemble Contest, which happens in May. And these amazing students were able to go all the way to the state level for this one. The first people that I want to recognize is that the clarinet quartet, which is Cassidy Walters, Eliana Salvina, Shirlene Castillo, and Lizbeth Vasquez. Their quartet, and they played what this is. They played an ensemble for clarinet. What they had to do is that they played together as four in front of one judge, and they went to audition in front of probably, I want to say, hundreds and hundreds of students from across East Texas in our region. And they're able to go for the different categories of the music. Grade level three is the easiest one, grade level one's the hardest. And for ensemble, it has to be grade level one, both ensemble and solo. If it's an ensemble, it can have the music in front of them. Or if it's a solo, they have to have it completely memorized and with, in a piano accompaniment. So that's for the four people that we have over there. The other, we have a percussion trio. We have Landon Skeen, Juan Gonzalez, and Abi Maya Rodriguez. They have a multi-percussion trio. And also with Juan and Landon Skeen, they'll also be attending not only with just an ensemble, but also a solo ensemble as well. So they qualified in two categories, for State Solen Ensemble. And then lastly, we have our soloist. We have Seth Barrett for French horn. And then we also have Kelly Clark on marimba. And then we have Ava Moran, she's gonna be here tonight, but she's gonna be attending as an alto vocalist. We don't have a choir program, but she was able to qualify as an alto vocalist, that's amazing. So I want to brag a little bit for this percussion students. We have, for Landon Skeen, who is not able to be with us tonight, but this is his third year back-to-back being able to go to State Solen Ensemble. Juan Gonzalez as well, this is his third year going to State Solen Ensemble. Abi Maya Rodriguez, this is his second time going to State Solen Ensemble. We have also Seth Barrett on French horn. This is his second year going to State Solen Ensemble. And we have also Kelly Clark on marimba going to State Solen Ensemble. And what's amazing, that last year for the percussion students, they were able, in the first time in the program history, to earn a First Division Gold Medal in our percussion program history. So that was under the direction with Mr. Cheek, which is a great thing. And then hopefully this year as well, we will have.
Calls on a check back.
You have all the battery for this one?
Good evening. I'm Tracy Decker. I'm the SHAC advisor. And I was going to give you a summary of our activities and programs for this school year. In October, Aurora Health provided a flu shot clinic for staff and students. Max Kennedy and myself provided Stop the Bleed training for high school students. And this is a training that's required by the House Bill 496, and it's concerning traumatic injury response. Red Ribbon Week was the, is the nation's oldest and largest drug prevention awareness program. It was October 23rd through the 28th, and each campus participated in various activities to raise awareness about substance use. In November, Christus St. Michael's Mobile Asthma Unit provided free asthma screenings for students. This program is grant-funded, and the district receives money based on student participation. The juniors also had an opportunity to participate in the UT Southwest Obesity Research Program. Elementary students participated in the annual PE Turkey Trot, and we had a SHAC meeting. In December, the Fantastic Teeth Band Club program was presented to first-grade students, and the Masons provided each student with a dental hygiene kit. C P R training, as required by House Bill 897, was provided for some seniors by Cassie Bates and myself. In February, Aurora Health returned for a student immunization clinic. The American Heart Association Kids Heart Challenge was in February, and elementary students participated in that, and they raised a total of $15,706. The district also joined services with Texas Child Health Access through Telemedicine, also known as T Chat, and they provide telehealth programs to school districts to help identify and assess the behavioral health needs of students and provide access to mental health services. T Chat is funded by the Texas Legislature, and there's no cost to schools or family who participate. In March, UT Health Digital Mammography Mobile Unit was on campus, and 15 ladies participated with that, in those screenings. The Northeast Texas Child Advocacy Center provided a personal safety program known as Play It Safe to middle school students, and there was another SHAC meeting. In April, Aurora Health returned for another student immunization clinic. We hosted a SHAC meeting, and the Puberty Program, Always Changing and Growing Up, was presented to fifth-grade students. C P R training was provided again in the end of April and May to the rest of the seniors by Cassie Bates and myself. In May, the Northeast Texas Child Advocacy Center provided the Play It Safe program to the elementary students. Stop the Bleed training was provided to seventh and eighth-grade students by Max Kennedy and myself. Aurora Health returned today for a shot clinic for seniors. And the elementary PE Field Day is scheduled for May 16th through the 18th. And tonight, I'm giving the school board the SHAC summary. Recommendations by the SHAC for the upcoming year include to continue employee programs, which is vaccinations for employees and family members, annual lab work, host the mammography unit, and host vascular and organ ultrasound screenings for employees and family members. For student health programs and activities, we'll continue flu shots and immunization clinics, the Fantastic Teeth program, the Mobile Asthma Unit, the esteemed Sexual Abstinence and Character Education Program for seventh and ninth graders, Growing Up and Always Changing Puberty Program for fifth grade, continue the coordinated health program using Quaver Health and PE curriculum for elementary, provide cardiac screenings for student athletes, make available for use unassigned Narcan for opioid overdose on the high school campus that can be administered by trained staff, make available for use on all campuses unassigned epinephrine for the treatment of severe life-threatening allergic reactions known as anaphylactic reactions to be administered as needed by trained staff. And the SHAC budget request for 23 and 24 is $2,880. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Decker.
Thank you.
Important stuff. All right. We're going to item seven, open forum for public comments. We have two tonight. Okay? Amy Briscoe and Jeff Briscoe. Amy or Jeff, want to go first?
I'll go first. I can show them how to do it.
Okay.
Hi. Great to be a talker. Every week, I have some notes, so don't get off track, if you don't mind.
Oh, yes. We'll give you five minutes.
I won't take that long. I'll be quick. So I'm here today to speak against arming civilians in a gun-free zone. Guns are the leading cause of death for children aged zero to 19. That's huge. Adding guns on our campus is not the answer. Bringing more guns is not the answer, bringing more guns to the table. As a parent, I would feel concerned, and I wouldn't be likely to enroll my children in a school where teachers were armed. I'm not alone. It's an unpopular opinion. The gun lobby pushes for it, but seven out of 10 teens, eight out of 10 teachers, and seven out of 10 parents are against arming school staff. And I've cited that, if anybody wants to know where about my source. I believe that arming the staff, and I'll tell you, I did some research after I saw the Optics article on it. And I looked for articles for it and articles against it. And one article caught my attention. It was in Cleveland, and it said, "Parents tout the benefits of the Guardian program in their high schools." So I read it. And I've got a copy of it. I emailed it to Scott and maybe to Josh, but they did. They said, "This is, this has been beneficial." They go on to talk about how it was the very last layer of protection that they added on their campuses. Before they armed any teachers, they had perimeter fencing, access control, manned guard shacks, school resource officers on every campus and every building, and then floating around, metal detectors, bulletproof glass. Those were all put in place before they armed their teachers. And I would urge you, please consider meeting those needs first and foremost. I think our school staffing issues need to be met before we start arming the ones that we do have showing up. I've sat in meetings with you guys where we're so understaffed, we don't have substitutes to cover for our teachers. We're taking raised hands out of the audience to substitute. So we need to meet those needs before we say, "Well, we've got, I don't know what we're operating at, and I don't want to throw out a percentage that's not accurate." But we need to meet those needs first. Arming staff feels premature, and like we're focused more on reaction instead of prevention. It feels like it is a cheaper alternative. I know it's expensive to hire school resource officers, and maybe to hand out weapons would be a cheaper option. So it makes it, to me as a parent, feel like it's a budget issue and not a safety issue. And to be clear, this is very much a safety issue. With the recent bonds passing that I'm so proud of, I'm so excited for the changes that are coming to our campus, I trust that you will all be good stewards of this money and put it where it needs to go, prioritize our safety and secure our campuses. And lastly, in closing, I told you if you quit here, Jeff and I, you guys know, the superintendent, Dr. McCullough, the school board, you guys all have our utmost respect, our love, our support. We are, once a tiger, always a tiger. That's true. But none of you, and please take this with the most respect, none of you are qualified to vet, train, or arm civilians in a gun-free zone. And that's exactly what the Guardian program is. You can take them to training and send them to schools, but at the end of the day, they are armed civilians in a gun-free zone, and it will not make it safer. More guns in schools means putting students in harm ways, harms way. Please table this idea until you've been able to do more research, until we've been able to utilize this bond money that we're passing. Let's look at all the other ways we can prevent a terrible, terrible tragedy. Adding guns to the table is not it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jeff?
I didn't know I was going to get offstage. So I have a little bit of a different perspective. So just some things to consider and questions that I have on doing this. So from my perspective, I was a city of Dallas police officer and went through training, So in, to be a police officer, a lot of time is spent on the code and things like that, but majority of the time is safety and use of force and things like that. So the DPD training was six months long, eight, 10 hours a day, five days a week. After that, there was 12 weeks of field training officers that you had to ride out with. Then you're on a one-year probationary period. And all of this was to get you through that you can handle yourself with a weapon, you understand the use of force, you understand the force continuum. And so I have, I have some questions. Who establishes the training requirements for this? Because the state does it for law enforcement, and you're licensed. Are the trained people, are they trained on use of force and de-escalation? They get a barricaded person? You know, I mean, what if you're going to have a teacher or a staff member have to deal with that? So another concern that I have that we spend a lot of time on in training was like, who manages the staff member who's selected? Who, the person carrying it? Who's monitoring the emotional, psychological, and condition of the self, of the staff member throughout the year? Like, are they going through a life of them? Are they going through a divorce? Because they're domestic, they take to drinking, they do, there's something going wrong in their life. You know, the staff member will have complete access to all campuses and every classroom, which is a ton of soft targets. Are they prepared to shoot a student? Someone they likely coached in softball or Little League? You know, one thing about the qualification is too, also, in police training, you have to qualify and show your proficient with the weapon. You know, one of the things that concerns me is just because you can deer hunt or can shoot, or you can shoot a can in a pasture, or you can, you're really good with it, it doesn't translate into being capable of a tactical situation following an active shooter. Your body doesn't respond like that. You're not out just messing around, you're not hunting. That, that's a concern. The other one that I have a real concern about, if someone said, "Here's a pistol, go take on the guy with A R fifteen," I would be real concerned because you're, you're just a target at that point. So, I mean, I don't know what you do with that, having a pistol on and going to a five with someone in assault. And you, and you saw that evolve, they didn't want to breach it because they didn't, they couldn't match it. Another important thing that we did in training was retention, weapon retention. And so when you carry a firearm, you get kind of a little bit lazy and lackadaisical with it because it's on you all the time, and you want to do the right thing, but you kind of get a little bit lazy with it. What happens when that 18-year-old student attacks the teacher and takes the gun? Who can physically overpower them? The other thing that I know from small towns, everybody knows everything about everybody, and I don't think the staff member will get anomalous for very long. The students' emotions carry them. Another point in that is, you know, officers and jailers don't carry guns inside the jail, but you got to check them before you go in because of the inherent risk. And as Amy, as she covered, there's a lot of documented cases of carrying custody of the weapon. And to me, the unintended consequence is far outweigh the intended purpose of arming staff. And I can't even imagine what the liability on staff, the individual, carries when there is an accident. Because there'll be an accident. When you bring guns to the table, it's going to be an accident. Whether that's like she was talking about in Cleveland or Whitney, where they just left it, they just weren't, they were just preoccupied. And the third grader goes and gets it. To me, you concentrate on the perimeter and access control around the building, which the bond, I hope, helps a lot more of that. And you hire more school resource officers that are licensed and trained. And additionally, one last, two last things. When you have a uniformed officer in a marked vehicle, that creates presence, and that creates prevention. So when someone pulls up and there's a whole bunch of police there, they don't want to mess with that. If someone's walking around and they got to tuck in their dockers with their Mount Vernon Tiger shirt over it, that there's really no prevention there. You might as well just throw a rock at them.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank y'all, and appreciate y'all.
Thank y'all for your concerns. Okay, let's move to item eight, our consent agenda. So any questions on that? Kyle, I know you haven't seen the consent agenda, but next month, you'll get a board book, and there'll be a bunch of stuff that we clump together, that we can clump together, and it's kind of all made in one action item, as you can see on your, on eight here, minutes and different things from last time, so we can vote on that all in one. So any further questions on that consent agenda? Okay, at this time, I'll take a motion that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Motion made by Josh. Second by Robert. All four. Two, three, four, five, six.
But you got to check them before you go in because of the inherent risk. And as she covered, there's a lot of documented cases of carrying custody of the weapon. And to me, the unintended consequence is far outweigh the intended purpose of arming the staff. And I can't even imagine what the liability on staff, the individual, carries when there is an accident. Because there'll be an accident, when you bring guns to the table, it's going to be an accident. Whether that's like she was talking about in Cleveland or Whitney where they just left it, they just weren't, they were just preoccupied. And the third grader goes and gets it. To me, you concentrate on the perimeter and access control around the building, which the bond, I hope, helps a lot more of that. And you hire more school resource officers that are licensed and trained. And additionally, one last, two last things. When you have a uniformed officer in a marked vehicle, that creates presence. And that creates prevention. So when someone pulls up and there's a whole bunch of police there, they don't want to mess with that. If someone's walking around and they got tucked in their dockers with their Mount Vernon Tiger shirt over it, that there's really no prevention there, you might as well just throw a rock at them.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank y'all and appreciate y'all.
Thank y'all for your concerns. Okay, let's move to item A, our consent agenda. So any questions on that? Kyle, I know you haven't seen the consent agenda, but next month you'll get a board book. And there'll be a bunch of stuff that we clump together, that we can clump together. And it's kind of all made in one action item. As you can see on your, on eight here, minutes and different things from last time. So we can vote on that all in one. So any further questions on that consent agenda? Okay, at this time, I'll take a motion that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Motion made by Josh. Seconded by Robert, all four. Two, three, we're about six. Okay, let's move to our action items. Item A, consider and approve TIPS vendors for purchase of new kitchen equipment for the middle school cafeteria.
So I make a recommend, I recommend to you the, what's been presented to you in your, in your board book. As a part of your consent agenda, what you approved was a budget amendment that was put in there for kitchen equipment to cover the cost that actually is coming out of fund balance, out of the fund 240 cafeteria account or food service account. As you see, what, what the recommendation is for is two pantry refrigerators, two heated cabinets, a range oven that will all be awarded to A Smart Restaurant Supply and serving counters with milk cooler with the responding company of Mission's Restaurant Supply. The dollar amounts are there. And again, the budget amendment was made previously in the consent agenda for those. They'll actually go into the middle school cafeteria to replace the existing equipment because it's time.
Probably do that this summer. Any further questions on that one? Okay, at this time, I make a motion that we approve the TIPS vendor for purchase of a new kitchen equipment for the middle school cafeteria. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Josh. Any further questions? All four. That's six oh. Moving on to item B, consider action to certify and approve the 2023, 2024 TIC certification form.
Good evening, this is our annual certification that we're required to do under Texas Education Code, which certifies that all students have access to instructional materials that are covering the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills, also known as TEACs, for all required subjects. This also certifies that we protect children against obscene and harmful content and requires requirements for certification under the Children's Internet Protection Act. They have added that certification on to the TIC certification form, which is in your board book per view. That also indicates all instructional materials that we have purchased in Texas Instructional Materials Allotment that do comply with requirements to make TEACs.
So they added more TEACs?
They didn't add more TEACs, they just added a longer form. The form is not, it used to be a half page, one page, five pages, 10 pages, so on and so on.
Yep. Okay, do I have any more questions, Chandler, on that? All right. So at this time, I will take a motion that we certify and approve the 2023, 2024 TIC certification form as presented. Motion made by Leanne. Seconded by Robert, all four. Six oh, okay. Item C, consider the approval and adoption of a resolution declaring the official intent of the District to reimburse costs in accordance with 1.150-2 of the Treasury Regulations incurred within connections with the district's planned capital projects from the proceeds of the tax-exempt bonds which will finance said projects.
Okay, what, what this resolution is for is for us as a district, since the bonds passed were approved by the voters, for the projects to begin, if there are projects that need to begin before the bonds are sold, that any cost incurred on projects that are approved by the voters and the bonds, that once the bonds are sold, that the money from those can be reimbursed back to the district to cover the cost dealing with the bonds. That is the only cost that will be reimbursed, or anything in connection to the, to the construction projects approved by the bond.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve that 1.150-2, the Treasury Regulations as presented, do I have a second? Seconded by Scott, any further questions for Dr. McCullough on that? All four. Six oh. Moving on to item D, consider renewal of legal services program with Powell Law Group, LLP, for the 2023, 2024 school year.
And you know, Powell Law Group has been our legal representation, or I think even before I got here, at least I know for the previous five years. And so it would be my recommendation to you as a board to continue that legal services with Powell Law Group for the 23, 24 school year.
Okay. Any further questions on that? At this time, I'll take a motion that we renew Powell Law Group as our legal service program. Motion made by Robert Taylor. Seconded by Scott, all four. Six oh. Moving on to item E, deliberation and possible action to select an architect for the Mount Vernon ISD turf installation project.
Okay, so you'll see in a, in a, one of the next action items is, is for a different company to basically be the, the company that we choose for the installation of the turf. But as a requirement by law is for us as a, as a district to have an independent architectural group, basically to be a second set of eyes and to sign off on behalf of the school for that. Further question, I mean Blake is here, can answer that question. But my understanding, that is the responsibility that we have by law as a district to have that. And so since we, as a district have already, last year we chose WRA as our acting architect. I make that recommendation that they, that they continue that as a part of this project as well. So WRA will not be drawing it. Hellus, in the next few minutes, if that's approved, we'll, we'll be working through that. WRA is just an independent part off of that.
Okay. I make a motion that we adopt and approve the resolution selecting WRA architects as the architect for the Mount Vernon ISD turf installation project. Do I have a second? Seconded by Robert, is there any further questions on that for WRA? All four. Six oh. Item E, deliberation and possible action to select an architect for the Mount Vernon ISD turf installation project.
Yeah, which is never.
That's why you wear the glasses. Real donkey. Deliberation and possible action to select a delivery method for the Mount Vernon ISD turf installation project.
Okay, so my recommendation to you is going to be that we select what's called a job order contracting delivery method just for the turf installation project itself. What the job order contract is, is it is a vetted process. Actually allows you to do that through a vetted process and takes care of the bidding process through, through our connection and our participation in the TIPS program. Meets all, all levels of the law requirements of what we have. And it will cover us as a district with Blake's blessing as well, to be able to move forward with that process to have turf installation and to begin with that.
Okay. So then we would need a motion to adopt and approve the resolution selecting job order contracting JALC as the delivery method for the Mount Vernon ISD turf installation project. Anybody want to make that motion? Leanne makes the motion, do I have a second? Robert seconds that motion. Any further questions on that, on the job order contract? Okay, all four. Six oh. Are we on G? Deliberation and possible action to adopt a prevailing wage rate for the Mount Vernon ISD turf installation project.
Again, this is a legal requirement that we're required to, to follow through with. It is not that we're setting the wage rate for it, but it is a resolution that we are adopting the prevailing wage rate for the project for the Mount Vernon ISD turf installation project. Blake, do you want to give any other explanation of that? Is there any additional that needs to be made for that?
I think that's it.
Okay.
Okay. Tell you what, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt and approve the resolution adopting a prevailing wage rate for the Mount Vernon ISD turf installation project. Do we have a second? Seconded by Kyle. Any further questions on that? Okay, all four. That's six oh. A whole lot of stuff dealing with turf that pretty much covers the same thing, right?
For the most part.
Yeah, okay. H. Deliberation and possible action to delegate authority to the district superintendent of schools to negotiate and execute the necessary construction contracts and develop any procurement and solicitation documents as necessary per Texas law on behalf of the board of the Mount Vernon ISD turf installation project.
What this would allow me to do would be able to act on behalf of the district in working with the, the company that will be putting in our turf this summer and allow me to do some things without having to wait until the next call of board meeting or to call a special board meeting pending your approval.
Okay. Any further questions or comments, questions on that? And, you know, we'll stay in communication.
As you know, I update you on those things regularly as well. We'll bring those before you, I mean, let you know what the process is and what I'm approving at that time.
Okay. I move that we adopt and approve the resolution delegating authority to the district superintendent of schools to negotiate and execute the necessary construction contracts and develop any procurement and solicitation documents as necessary per Texas law on behalf of the Mount Vernon ISD turf installation project. That's going to need a second. Seconded by Josh, any further questions? All four. Six oh. Consider action to move June's regular board meeting to June 15, 2023.
That, that's at my request, I'm on the UAL legislative conference. And our, our regular scheduled board meeting for June is June 12. And I'm scheduled to be at that, at that, a part of that committee at that time. And so if, if June 15 is not doing well, then I, I can not go to that. But I, as being an elected member of that, I would ask that we could, if it would work for us, move to June 15 on that Thursday, that we can do so.
Anybody have any conflicts on that day?
I won't be able to make you for my.
You won't be here anyway, okay, okay. Fifteenth, fifteenth, okay then?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so at this time, I'll make a motion that we move June's regular board meeting to June 15, 2023. Do I have a second? Seconded by Josh, all four.
Thank you, thank you.
One, two, three, four, up six.
Okay, thank you for doing so.
Consider approval of interlocal agreement between Franklin County and MBISD for tax collection.
This is what we already really, I mean, this is what we can do on a yearly basis. So this is just coming back for our yearly interlocal cooperation agreement with Franklin County to collect our taxes on behalf of the district.
Okay. Any questions on that? So at this time, I'll take a motion to approve interlocal agreement between Franklin County and MBISD for tax collection. Motion made by, who must have gone. Seconded by Kyle, all four. That's six oh there, okay. Last action item here, consider resolution for Texas Rural Broadband Coalition Regarding Broadband Service and Internet Needs.
Anthony, do you have anything to add to this, on this here?
Oh, really?
Okay, all right. But I think what this is, is just a resolution that we're joining the Texas Rural Broadband Coalition, basically agreeing and requesting the state do the broadband affordable access throughout the state. It is a resolution that other, other schools have become a part of and asking that we do the same.
Okay. Any questions on that? All right, at this time, I'll take a motion that we adopt the resolution from Texas Rural Board of Broadband Coalition Regarding Broadband Service and Internet Needs. Who wants to make that motion? Motion made by Leanne. Seconded by Robert Taylor, all four. Six oh. Information items here, our enrollment totals tonight.
Enrollment totals as of May 2nd was 1547, which is down six students from April, but is still 30 students more than where we were at this time last year.
Okay. Financial reports?
Financial reports are listed there. We'll go through line by line, if you have a specific question, we can look to address that. Each one of those reports are there for you for, for each one of our 199, 240, and 599, to show you where we are in our general operating budget or cafeteria and our debt service, where we stand.
Okay. All right. Item 11 here, pro session. So at this time, the board will now adjourn into executive, executive session pursuant to the following sections of Texas Open Meetings Act, Government Code 551071. It is?
And 551.
851 in the P M, convene back into open session. Dr. McCullough, personnel report this time, let's go back up a little bit here.
Yes, sir, if you will, forgive me the opportunity, I apologize. If we can go back up to action item, or really item two on canvassing the election results, I apologize. I only provided you with the canvas for proposition A and proposition B. And I need to make a formal here for us, formal action on canvassing the trustee election as well. Josh Jordan for place five unopposed received 1,434 votes. So he is the elected trustee for that position. Trustee place six, Linda Baird received 1,181 votes. Mike Melander received 507. So Linda Baird remains in her place as place six as trustee. Trustee place seven, Velvet Coburnly received 300 votes. Kyle Clayton received 999. Dan Bentley received 400. So Kyle Clayton wins trustee place seven with those 999 votes. So again, I apologize for missing that a while ago. As a board, if you could take another action to approve the canvassing of the trustee election.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the canvassing of the board election, board of trustees election. Do I have a second? Seconded by Robert, all four. Four, six, on that.
Thank you, and I apologize about that. Jessica, did you get how that goes?
Yes, that's really going to be a five oh vote because you.
That's true. Kyle can't vote.
Does that, or can you report that?
Yes, yes, nope. It'll be a five oh.
Scratch Kyle on that vote. Kyle Clayton here. Just talk about Dr. McCullough giving him higher authority in May, June, and July.
Okay, yes, coming out of executive session, I'd ask that you do, as you have done in the past, because of how quickly we need to fill positions at this time of the year as potential candidates are interviewed at different places, when, when our campus principals or certain positions have the opportunity to hire somebody rather quickly for a position that they want. I ask that you give me that hiring authority to do so for the remainder of May and June and July, please.
Any questions on that? At this time, I make a motion that we give Dr. McCullough authority, hiring authority in the remainder of May, in the month of June and July. Do I have a second? Seconded by Josh, all four.
Thank you, thank you for that, that'll, that'll help our HR department, our principals a whole lot, so thank you. As you know, I'll, I'll update you on that regularly when, when that takes place, so, and I will continue to do so.
Okay. We'll go up, compare to 13, item A, on our personnel report. Need to consider approval to withdraw the resignation letter accepted, accepted for Crimson Rose.
Okay, Ms. Rose had, had submitted her resignation a couple of months ago. But since that time, she has passed on necessary tests to be a certified teacher. Ms. Phillips, as well as Craig, have made the recommendation that she remains the teacher of the BAC. So I ask that you would accept the withdrawal of resignation of Crimson Rose.
Okay, I make that motion, do we have a second? Also, a second by Kyle, all four. That's six oh, next time is consider approval to renew employment contract for Crimson Rose.
Okay, because, thank you, because she had not, since she had resigned and was not a part of the contracts that we have acted on previously, now we'll have to act on her contract. It will be a first-year probationary, no, sorry, be a second-year probationary. It will be a first-year probationary, no, sorry, be a second-year probationary teacher contract for 23-24. I make my, that's my recommendation that you approve the contract and hire Crimson Rose.
Okay. Any further questions on that? Do I have a motion that we hire Crimson Rose? It's made by Leanne. A second by Scott. All four. Six oh.
Thank you.
Okay. Item C, consider professional contracts.
You see those listed there for, for you. Fabian Warek, Brent Mitchell, Louis Lutz, Jennifer Danielson, McKay Monson, Samuel Byrne, Easton Silman, Alicia Butler, Chloe Griecebee, Benjamin Long. Each one of those, if you, if you had a chance to look at it, shows you what position they're for, and the normal HR paperwork that you see of who the interview committee was for and what campus you're going to be on. So it's my recommendation to approve the contracts of the people who are listed for you.
Okay. We need to act on those, I guess?
Yes, please.
Okay. So do I have a motion that we act on these, accept these as presented?
I'm ready for that motion.
That's made by Robert. Seconded by Josh. All four. That's six oh.
Thank you.
Resignations?
Just acknowledge resignations that are listed there for you. Juana Ford, high school teacher. Adrian Boland, elementary interventionist. Ivan Kazada, assistant band director. Kaylee Kirby, color guard coordinator. And Genesis Day, elementary bilingual teacher. That's just acknowledging those.
Okay.
Okay.
Any further business? Meeting's adjourned at 8:57 PM.
Thank you all very much.